All right, good evening, everyone. Today we have a regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Cape May, New Jersey. We are here in the Cape May City Hall Auditorium. Today is Tuesday, February 21st, 2023. The time is now 5:03. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as all.
Thank you.
Under the open public meetings law, notice of this meeting was sent to the Cape May County Herald and the Press of Atlantic City, and a copy of the agenda was delivered to each member of City Council and posted on the Cape May City website and Cape May City Hall Bulletin Board. Notice is hereby provided that Cape May City Council meetings are audio recorded and video streamed live. Live video streams are posted to the Cape May City website. The City of Cape May is not responsible if audio recording or live video streaming of a meeting is unavailable. Roll call. Councilmember Baldwin?
Here.
Councilmember McDade?
Here.
Councilmember Meyer?
Here.
Mayor Malik?
Here.
Councilmember Yeager?
Here.
City Solicitor Gillen Schwartz?
Here.
And Deputy City Manager Velasco?
Here.
And then Mayor, we do need a motion just to add the engineer report to the agenda.
Do we have a motion to add the engineer's report to the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember McDade?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Malik?
Yes. And next, we have the city manager's report. Deputy City Manager Velasco?
Yes. I'm going to briefly go over a few things. Vince has some of these on his update, but he'll elaborate better than I. Today, the overhead wires and poles were removed in the area of the expanded promenade. Four of them were removed. Two more remain to be removed. They were the two that have services on them. The county will be installing overhead lights with shields on top of the traffic signals at Gurnee, Ocean, and Decatur Streets in the next two weeks to replace the lighting from the other side. The Lafayette Street improvements started today, Phase One, which includes West Perry to Ocean Streets and the school drop-off. Our police department is working hand-in-hand with the county to ensure the traffic flow is minimally disruptive. Our due maintenance plan is nearing completion, and we expect to present the document to council in March. The sanitary sewer evaluation of inflow and infiltration started yesterday. You may see them guys around town scoping some of the pipes. Also, at the end of last week, dredging began on Devil's Reach, and they're expected to complete in the next week or so. Our firehouse project is within budget to date. One change order has been submitted and approved and equaled less than 1% of the total project. We look to be on schedule for returning our firefighters back home for summer. The emergency broadcast speakers on the beachfront are currently being installed and will be operational when our lifeguards hit the stands. Army Corps of Engineers submitted its plans for comment for the beach renourishment at the Coast Guard Base in Poverty Beach. Nothing has changed since the last renourishment application, but comments are due by March 1st if anybody would like to view them. Our application for Quanis Park was submitted to County Open Space. Vince will touch on that. Coming up, we will have a meeting to discuss our options for summer transportation, and we're expecting the county to award the Beach Avenue contract at their February 28th meeting. Until that's awarded, they won't have a projected schedule, so we hope to report that back at the next council meeting. And that is all.
Perfect. Thank you. City Solicitor?
I don't have anything tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Nothing? Okay. With that, we will have our city engineer, Vince Orlando, take it away.
This is the second part of that email. His microphone.
Could you turn on the mic?
Thanks.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So we've got a couple exciting things to talk about this evening. The first project is the Franklin Street enhancement project that we're working on. It's the second of your packets. I have a couple of handouts that I submitted to the council. The first, which I don't have a large exhibit, is just the existing conditions, which shows how the park or the street currently exists, just to give some reference to the perspectives later on. So we looked at two options for the enhancement. Option one was the relocation of the building that sits behind City Hall. I'm not sure of the name of it, Mayor.
The Memmican Hughes Colonial House.
Memmican Hughes.
So moving that building to this position here and then creating a parking lot that mimics the existing parking area. The second option of that, both options are shown in the packet, is keeping that building as is and constructing a new parking area along the church consisting of 11 spaces. Other than that, option A and B is pretty much the same as it comes to the streetscape as reflective on Franklin. We're looking at a couple of things. All-new curb, all-new sidewalk, new paving. The sidewalk would be a pedestrian brick sidewalk to kind of mimic some of the other elements in town specifically that sit in front of Sturdy. It incorporates a lot of street furnishings, as you'll see in the perspective, consisting of new street hardware, new lights, banners, a sitting area that's positioned out in front of the library, which is kind of an enclave off the sidewalk, which would be a small sitting area for people to get off the sidewalk. We made the sidewalk on the south side 10 foot wide, the sidewalk on the north side 6 foot wide, and we tried to expand it as much as practical. There will be no sidewalk in front of the firehouse for obvious reasons. The fire trucks have 12-inch thick concrete, and we can't replicate that with brick. So the, I guess really the first perspective is really the comparison between perspectives A and B, which is in your packet. Perspective A shows the addition of that relocated structure sandwiched between the existing single-family home and the church. Perspective B eliminates that, shows some landscaping, and shows the parking area. As you can see, it was our intent to have the lights pretty spaced pretty closely to create a very nice effect, but not have it too bright for the residential impact so that we would downplay the lights, but there'd be more of them. The lights, what we're thinking that we would do is one side would have ability for planters on the side, and we would have banners on the other side. We did a project in Seattle where the baskets were automatically fed for water, so they don't have to be maintained.
Nice.
We think that would be a good approach for that. Another perspective, which kind of looks down the street from Lafayette to Washington, it just kind of puts everything in perspective. The big glaring thing that obviously you see is that we have one of the lovely Atlantic Electric telephone poles that sits there with a pretty big transformer.
And a bad history.
Yeah.
And a bad history, exactly. You know, we did have a few discussions of whether or not that could be relocated and moved to underground. I think it's a big feat. We have a, pretty much the same, we have a two pod transformer on Washington. Not impossible, but you know, it may take a lot of work to do that. The other perspective drawing that we show is kind of respective of the church, I mean the library, which was the old school, and the small little brick sitting area along there, which we think would incorporate into the sidewalk pattern, have a brick retaining wall around it, and then benches inside.
I think that looks so nice to have a little seating area out front of the library.
We also did incorporate a hardscape from Franklin to the parking lot in the rear so that it's very narrow, but we wanted to hardscape that so that it'd be a hard surface that could be used for vehicles and pedestrians.
That's going between the farmhouse and the library?
Between the library and the building to the, yeah, the church.
Okay. I didn't know what song.
Yeah, in fact, if you look at the, this is one drawing, you'll see that we enhance that driveway there to a 12-foot wide asphalt drive in that location. Apparently, it's a stone surface, and then that would really allow for one-way vehicles to come, at least in, this would be an entrance only as we perceive it, to get into this area, and they would exit, add on to Lafayette.
Great.
Next stage is, you know, look for funding sources. I think the, I don't know if there's any comments or questions for this. The other thing that came up later is that the city is entrusted in a piece of hardware from the 9/11 attack that has been donated to the city, and so that we need to find a final resting place for that as kind of somewhat of a monumentation, whether that is incorporated in front of the old firehouse or some way incorporated into this element. But I did want to mention that because the mayor had put me in contact with...
Deputy Chief AC.
Yes.
Yeah.
Who has secured that piece of hardware.
Yeah. And thank you to Deputy Chief AC. He's doing a nice job with that, so thank you.
So I, can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Vince, so why was it considered to move the Memmican House, given the fact that it's obviously a great expense? It appears from, we're losing a little bit of parking space, but also the AME Church would be without some parking if we made that move. There was obviously a benefit, though, another benefit that you were looking at in making the move.
Just to find a better location for the structure itself.
I mean, it is out of the, nobody knows it's there practically.
Be more prominent, be within the landscape. I think it has historic relevance. We want to present two options, you know, keeping the building there, look at that alternative, and keeping the building where it is, and really kind of bounce those two ideas off of council to say, what are the benefits of keeping it there and what are the benefits of locating it? Locating it won't be that difficult, it's a smaller structure. My guess is you probably move that for $15,000, $20,000 tops.
It's not far, right?
It's kind of piggybacking, can I, Mr. Mayor, on that? I know that there are some structural concerns with that building, and if that currently exists, my thought, okay, if we do end up moving it, if we could shore that up, it would address that issue as well, so.
But to be clear, sorry, I'll just...
That's fine.
We won't do this without the support of the Greater Cape May.
Oh, absolutely.
I think the idea, too, is let's compare parking, okay? If we're going to have eight spa...
Three.
What is it, Vince?
You pick up eight spaces here.
Eight there, and 11. So, one hand, we have 11, could potentially have 11 spaces next to the AME Church, or eight spaces where the Colonial House, Memmican Hughes house is. Memmican Hughes is my favorite name in town, by the way, but... So, I think it's, it gives us some, to look at the different options in parking especially, but I think it is a nice view to see those, okay, AME Church, beautiful historic house, which they've done such a nice job, Trish over there on Franklin Street renovating that property next to another museum that is a little bit more prominent. But just to be clear, I think, so everyone knows, this would only be something we even consider if the Greater Cape May Historical Society wants it. If they don't, then forget it.
Right.
But it's nice to see the view.
I mean, in all honesty, the house kind of fit perfectly in the streetscape and in that space.
Yes.
So it wasn't like we're trying to fit a round peg in a square hole. It really did work out nicely as far as the perspective and bring the two properties together and make a useful life out of that historic structure, whether it be a visitor center or just a place where people could go in and do some history.
I interrupted Mr. Myers.
I have a number of comments and questions, if I can get through them real quick. And it's important to think about the parking, the give-and-take between 11 and 8, you know? I think the benefit in this particular case, well, first of all, a little history, as a former president of the Historical Society, Greater Cape May Historical Society, I'm neither for or against moving it, first of all. This building has been moved at least two times before in the history of Cape May. It's one of, if not the oldest building in Cape May, so you know, may not be such a bad thing to look into the infrastructure as well. And on a side note, I think we're getting up to our 25th anniversary of re-signing the lease of the Historical Society for that building. We just do a great job, and you know, just to, you know, toot my own horn, our horn, you know, we've been able to replace the, you know, beaded-sided boards, and I had some friends that were able to get access to a historic barn and replace those boards with, you know...
That's so cool.
You know, same time period. So that house, to me, is very significant and as well to a lot of people. I think you did a great job. I think it's great that we have brick on this street. I think maybe in a Phase Two or whatever phases we have here, I'd like to see that brick, and also to mention that this brick continues further down Franklin Street, you know, the post office as well. I'd like to see it cross the Lafayette Street to include the Stephen Smith House and possibly the Harriet Tubman House and in front of the Baptist Church. You know, I think part of the thinking of why it would be important to move the Historical House here is it's part of the museum historic tea district, you know? It's a very significant historical museum district that we have in town. I think by looking into the future, continuing to brick towards, you know, the Harriet Tubman House and directly across the street to the Stephen Smith House would kind of give some kind of significance to the walker that I'm in a different area.
Yeah.
This has a specific significance. I mentioned, oh, and also, if we did move the Historical House, the Memmican Hughes, there's a tree also on the property that's got significance. It's a space tree. It was actually germinated in space and then donated to the city of Cape May, so that would have to be moved. The auto water feeders, that is a really cool feature. The utility pole, I think that's a can-do project. You see all those buildings right here, the orange, the white, the orange, the dark orange, or the peach? Why can't we figure out if we can put them behind there? There's almost, I wouldn't call it an accessway, but it's almost a space behind there. We could probably work with the housing authority to put it right back, right behind there. That's just a thought. And then parking's an issue, and just on a side note, the librarians are concerned about their parking issues. I mean, at the minimum, we should supply them with a parking placard, but you know, there should be access, or at least handicap access to that library looking forward.
I did fail to mention that we are proposing two brick crosswalks, one here and one in the block, to effectively save for pedestrian access from one side to the other.
Yeah, I think the crosswalk to the new library, it obviously makes a ton of sense.
Yeah. Believe it or not, we did have that sidewalk going down, and like, well, it's kind of out of the project scope of Franklin Street, but I think it's a fabulous idea.
Well, as our engineer, I think, you know, that's looking forward, if anything we can do down the line.
Yeah.
And I think it'd be great if we could fit that into the initial grant that we're applying for. If it's not, this, it's a yearly grant that we can apply for.
Exactly.
Can, are there any, because this is going to be a really well-developed area in town, kind of like museum ways, so to speak. I mean, way signs to get people there, or has that been part of any of the discussion here?
I don't remember identifying any signs in this location, but I think it probably, as we start to fine-tune these plans, I think wayfinding is a pretty important element.
Or even, or even like a different color of street sign in that location, kind of make it, you know, instead of the black, which is beautiful, back on, or white on black, if it was red, kind of like the brick or whatever it is, you know, kind of like, oh, this kind of...
I think we would, even if you had signs identifying the church, you know, if in fact we do the move of the Hughes Colonial House, you know, just identifying those. But I think wayfinding signs are an important feature here since it is a walkable area.
Absolutely. Are those going to be gas lanterns that you propose?
I was proposing to use regular lights that look like gas lanterns.
Yeah.
We don't have too much of an eye on gas lanterns, and I think, I think we'd be better suited to just have a regular light fixture that produces enough light for pedestrian access. And one of the things I would do is the streetlight that's at the two intersections, I would remove so that we would kind of eliminate that ambient light.
Pull or not, get rid of the light.
Get rid of the light.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the gas lamps have gotten much better in mimicking the gas, the electric lights, but obviously, there's two gas lamps in front of the sturdy bank there, so...
Are they gas gas?
I think so, actually.
Yeah.
I think so. So it'd be nice to at least try to mimic them as closely as possible.
Mimic the style, but maybe not the gas portion. But I think as we, again, we move into a little bit more detail, we'll take a look at that.
I, one thing I love about this is the little sitting wall in front of the library. I just think that really tops off, which has a nice big tree out front that provides a lot of...
Has a big, beautiful, you know, preserved tree.
That wasn't cut, yeah.
And we're going to make sure that nothing's attached to that tree for signage.
If you were to see that design without the tree, it would be so sterile.
Exactly.
Exactly.
Yeah. So I just think overall, the brick and everything just will make that street really pop.
The next stage is maybe to fine-tune, you know, have a little bit more discussion on to move or not, the question, and then start developing a little bit fine-tuned or plan to come up with a cost estimate, and then get Mr. Rotella to start seeking out funding.
Perfect.
I'm going to leave these with our trusty deputy administrator.
Mayor?
Who loses them?
Over to this side. I would just like to point out that all of this work was done and completed under the grant that you all approved in October from the NJDOT for transportation alternatives. And, you know, this is a part of making this a more walkable area. So Vince moved very quickly on this, so thank you, Vince. But we just got that grant a little bit ago, and here's already bearing fruit.
Great news.
So the second presentation this evening is a presentation for what I'm dubbing Phase Two of the Welcome Center. As you know, we kind of took over the Welcome Center with previous engineering drawings. We were able to keep the same contractor, and we got through Phase Two for Phase One. Speaking with Councilman Shane and Councilman Mayor Zach, I said, all right, now that we have the bones here, let's give it some life and let's give it some spirit. So we started to look at how we could do that. There's a few ways. The first thing is I think we need to delineate between the parking for Oyster Bay and our parking. It's a dangerous situation. There's a change of grade there, so we're proposing two things. We're proposing a four-foot-high metal fence, a metal picket fence along the entire portion, except if you've been out there where there is kind of a walkway. That walkway will be open so that people will be able to go from the Oyster Bay lot to this lot, but only in a controlled atmosphere. The area between the Oyster Bay lot and our lot, we're proposing to use riprap stone for that 12 inches. There's not a whole lot to do there. I mean, I understand that the problem with two- to four-inch riprap, it becomes a very easy thing for kids to pick up and throw, but I think it's a, it's a pretty policed area, and I need to provide a mechanism to look at that grade and at least make it aesthetically pleasing, and that was the only thing that we think that would work there.
Because it's uneven between the two lots.
Yeah, because there's a difference of elevation between, at the worst-case scenario, up by the trash enclosure, about 11 inches... up by the trash enclosure, about eleven inches, and then it goes down to about three inches down in here.
Right.
And we did make up a tremendous amount of grade by filling that area, but I wanted to keep it at less than five percent slope. So, we held the tracks, worked five percent, and that's how we established a grade on that side.
And for everyone's knowledge, we had to keep the tracks in.
We had to keep the tracks in.
From the tracks to the edge of the property in five percent grade.
So, those tracks are still there. So, that was kind of easy. And then we wanted to incorporate some vertical elements. And the way we believe that we could do that is that as the parking lots are established, there's an area between each parking that is not utilized by the car. So, our idea is to cut that, to curb it, and provide four upright elements of a shade tree. We're recommending hedge maple for a number of reasons. One, it's somewhat cumular, it's tighter, it has a higher branching habit. Love the bark. I love the fact that, you know, it does have good fall color as a maple. It doesn't have buttress roots, so I think, I think it would do well in that space.
Could you use the microphone a little bit closer, Vince? I just had.
Okay, sorry. So, that's why we're recommending the hedge maples. The front area between the parking area and Lafayette was really a challenge. The first thing that we wanted to, we were proposing is a new sign. We spent a great deal of time looking at different signs, and if you see, we, the internet has been a great source of elements out there. So, we found an inspiration that we kind of liked, which kind of had a Victorian flair, somewhat of a railroad flair. So, I think we want to incorporate that design into a new Welcome Center sign. Metal roof, facade, downlights, maybe a brick base for the sign, and hand-carved, something that would be visible from both sides because right now, as you come down Lafayette, the view to the first sign is really not that great. And then what we're establishing, we're going to try to establish a landscape bed consisting of a lot of different things, evergreen shrubs, a couple of different shade trees to kind of block the view of the Oyster Bay facade. We have a low shrub line along the rest of the facade, only because they have windows there, and we don't want to block the windows. But we are going to provide at least a little bit more elements here to help hide the facade. The shrubs would consist of evergreen and deciduous subs, trying to mix evergreens with color. Providing another planting bed on the other side, again, with some additional shade trees and some additional shrubbery to kind of balance out the entranceway. We also are proposing to, right now, the, there is not an edge between the landscape area and the parking, so we're recommending kind of a granite Belgium block curbing along the north side or, I guess it's northwest, northeast, and along this portion of the facility, just kind of to provide a little bit more, a barrier between the parking area and the landscape area. And instead of pouring more white vertical curb, I felt that we could go with a little low-profile Belgium block curb, which I think has a little bit more aesthetic appeal. Think it'd be easier to construct since we already have an asphalt edge there. So, basically, the Phase Two, in our opinion, consists of a fence, some shade tree elements, Belgium block curb, and a new sign. I don't know how much it's going to cost.
I know Councilman Meyer helped with this.
Yes, we had a nice onsite meeting.
I think it's excellent. I like the maples. It worked in possibly some Leland Cypress or Arborvitae's, you know, that's something that the Shade Tree Commission would like, but I think the maples would give great shade and great color, as you said.
The, the area right here between these two, adjacent to the trash enclosure, we may be able to work some vertical evergreen elements. We only have about eighteen inches, though. So, we're thinking maybe some, some upright grasses or something of that nature, just to give a little bit of relief to that stark white of the trash enclosure next to the Oyster Bay.
Right, yeah.
One thing is the sign, well, the design will have to go before HPC. One recommendation I would make on the signage is I really like the brick that you chose. I think the cap to that brick should be like a blue stone or some type.
It could act as a seat wall, too.
What's that again?
It could act as a seat wall. Yeah, people could sit there.
Yeah, nice, nice. So, I think, I think the metal's great. If you could specify blue stone as the cap to the brick, I think that's really exactly what they'd be looking for.
So, I mean, again, this is a concept of the sign. I mean, once we take it to the next level, we'd be choosing materials and what it looks like and, you know, obviously, the font detail for the term Cape Bay Welcome Center, the background, you know, whether or not we wanted some additional graphics on that sign, the town, the city's logo. There's a lot of different things that could be incorporated in there.
I could think of maybe parking, just in small letters, public parking.
Yeah, I agree.
If it is a new lot, we want to.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. So, this would be Phase Two. I, I would assume that if council wants, this, I think we should try maybe to fast-track at least a portion of this, which would consist of this fence and maybe the shade trees along that one side initially. We talked about phasing a little bit today. I'm not concerned too much about here. I think the safety issue's here. But I do have a concern about the safety issues between the two lots. So, if we could maybe effectuate that as a standalone job.
Right, okay. So, like, for the bidding of this, maybe just bid out the fence to, or at least get proposals that'll probably be under the.
Yeah.
Should be under the.
It could be under the forty-four thousand threshold limit.
I think that's very imperative. I got a call the last couple of days from the folks over there at Oyster Bay. It's something that maybe the city managers and the police department should know that, you know, there's complaints about kids jumping that, you know, the different grades when they're skateboards and whatnot. And, I mean, we can't do too much about keeping people off private property, so I told them to put a sign up, you know, no skateboarding. But if we can get a cop to run through there once in a while, you know, to determine. And, you know, on that note, I hate to be the old person in the room, but, you know, there's kids jumping off the skateboards on the Redory Park gazebo. They, I don't like to tell kids not to have a good time, but if they're ruining our features in town.
There's a liability there for the city to a certain degree. You know, somebody steps off the curb, breaks an ankle, I do have a concern there.
So, are we in agreement, everybody on the fence? Because I think we're hearing, let's put the fence up.
The only question that I have on the fence, I think you said a four-foot fence, am I correct? Does it change? It says five on the plan. That's the only reason I'm asking.
I think we kind of battered around four to five.
Okay.
I think.
I think four's okay.
I would prefer four. I think Matt and I had.
Five, it starts to look a little bit too commercial.
Matt and I had talked about this.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
The gentleman who worked on this project, Matt Hinder, and I think he had five initially. He said, I think I would want to see a four.
Okay.
Ever got changed. I would recommend a four.
Okay.
So, council, I think we're asking the city manager then to put out requests for proposals on fencing?
So, I'll provide a spec of the fence, which I do have available. So, it's, you know, again, with the supply chain, I don't know, but we use this fence on a number of occasions. We use it in North Wildwood at the park. We use it at the Rio Grande Park. It's a fabulous product. It's durable, sustainable. So, I'll give you a spec, and then we could get some prices, and I'll give you some context.
Yeah, the whole thing we'll have to, but I think, at least for the small committee for HPC, just to review the fence. I know that they've approved exactly that fence in the past, but obviously, let's, let's have that fence detail given to the small committee for HPC review.
I'll send over a better color rendition of it so they could see it a little bit.
Perfect.
Nicer.
Where, Vince, if you don't mind me asking, where were you proposing the openings?
Just one.
Just one opening?
Just one opening. So, if you, if you recall, when we did the parking layout, there was some parking spaces at a sixty-degree angle.
Yes.
Then as it got further, we went down to a forty-five.
Yeah, mm-hmm.
So, where that transition occurred, I was able to gain a thirty-inch opening that winded out to four feet. So, in that area, we've crosshatched in yellow. Opposite that area is, I think, we'll be able to, there's only probably a lip of about four inches.
So, you'll be able to.
So, we'll be able to transition there.
Okay.
It's by the tree all around the left.
Mm-hmm.
Correct.
Yeah, I do see it on here. It's tiny, but yeah.
I didn't see it.
As soon as you meant.
And a reason, really, is there's no car parked in that area, so you can walk.
There's no car parked. Unfortunately, on the Oyster side, there's a parallel parking space that's there. I can't change his parking.
Yeah, it's his.
I want to provide the opportunity to have an opening so that people did not have to walk all the way around.
Into the street.
Into the street and then back onto our property.
Great.
I think the project looks great considering what little area you had to work with. I think it really.
It doesn't take much.
But it looks like it really spruces up the area.
I think this will bring it to the point where it really turned, I mean, it's very functional now. I think this is the aesthetics, the whipped cream and cherry.
Mm-hmm. Yep, yep.
Okay. So, I guess the next phase would be to submit all of this to HPC, but especially to fast-track the metal fence.
Do we have a preliminary? Wouldn't it be too much to ask for just a preliminary of HPC to kind of fast-track this?
Yeah, they could do it through a review committee.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So, just, I mean, Lou, just let me know if you need harder copies. I know they sent you PDFs of these already, so whatever you need, we can make.
Perfect. Yeah, I can print those out, just the fence specifications.
I have that available.
And did we decide on a height?
Four.
I agree.
So, they were the two fun projects, and we thoroughly enjoy working on them. And as engineers and landscape architects, we don't usually get some of the fun stuff. It was enjoyable. As Mr. Velasco pointed out, the Cape May Firehouse is ongoing. We provide inspections as needed, but we haven't had to do any inspections because they haven't done any site work. The Beach Avenue Promenade, again, was reported. Coordination, the arches are underway. We are working on a lighting package to supplement the arch lighting on the promenade, which would consist of a double-head fixture, one on the promenade side, one on the street side, to provide for a little bit more lighting, especially on the parallel parking spaces on the east side of the street.
Can I ask a question about those arches? You know, you know, it's a little bit behind the game to start changing plans with these, but I think they're great, by the way. I was walking the promenade today, and I was at the Cove area, and I was thinking, maybe once this project is done, could we maybe get one more arch right there in the Cove where that last bench is? And there's a telephone, there's only one telephone pole there right by the pavilion. If we were to put that arch right where that end bench is and move that beautiful light that's right next to that bench back and replace the telephone pole with it, because that, that beautiful light fixture has also, what do you call it? Microphone or.
The speakers.
Speakers on them.
Right.
Just go down and look at it. I think it's going to be a successful project, but once this is done, I think that would be also.
Yeah, definitely.
We're missing something in that area that's very, let's take a picture under the arch in front of the lighthouse.
I agree.
Just want to put it out there.
I like that. Okay, Pennsylvania?
Pennsylvania Avenue, the contract was awarded to Lambert Construction. The contracts have been sent out to them, and we were thinking to commence construction for that probably in March with probably, I'm hoping, a June first completion. Again, we don't want to be working too much into July and August, especially on Pennsylvania Avenue. Kiwanis Park, the application to the county open space was sent. We redesigned the park, I shouldn't say. We added the open space elements that the county requires in order to try to effectuate some funds to the county. That was sent two weeks ago, two and a half weeks ago. We're waiting to hear from them. And we're waiting to hear from them to see what the funding source and how much funding before we award the contract to the low bid, only because we want to stay within the twenty percent, and we have to make sure that the changes to the contract don't go over twenty percent, because then we're stacked back to square one. So, we're in a little bit of a holding pattern until we see what the county's doing. If the county gives us, you know, I think we were asking for nine hundred thousand.
Roughly.
You know, that would help with defray some of the cost of our DCA grant, which was a half million. I think, I think we could wait a couple of weeks and see how that pans out.
For more money, yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
Lafayette Street Park is kind of mulling along, in all honesty. We've, we've had a few meetings on the land swap, which really is not directly affected for the park, but does have implications with permitting. So, we've kind of drug our feet a little bit to make sure that the land swap for the police station happens, because that does have an impact on, on the park and the application to the state.
Once we do that, is that, you know, key and ignition, gas on the pedal, or?
I would think so. I think that once we have that.
HUD.
After we have the swaperoo, I think we could move ahead quick.
As long as we get HUD approval.
Yeah.
Federal.
It's, good news, we got our DEP permit for the water line about a week and a half ago, maybe two weeks ago. We're, now that we have that permit and we know that there are no outstanding issues, we are under the construction plan specifications. I am hoping to have bids received, advertising received probably sometime in May.
That's great.
And my recommendation is not to start a contract of this nature until September. It's not going to have an impact on water, because it's a balancing for the two wells. But given our summer population, I just don't want to take a chance. I did speak with Lou and meet with our director of water to talk about some of the specification that he needs to make sure that we're all on the same page. Again, this is a project that we picked up. We, we picked it up late in the game. We did take it through the finish line for the DEP permits as a transition area waiver because we were through a wetland buffer.
I want to thank the DEP for that, for that waiver, but also your hard work on that. We all know getting the permitting from the DEP is, it just takes time, so.
We, I think I sent you the email train, and the problem with the transition area permit, general permit number eight, they had no timeframe. So, not like a CAFRA permit where it's an IP where they have a ninety-day clock. On the wetland transition area waivers, it could take as long as we want. So, it actually took eight months, and our contact up there, Ryan Anderson, is a real nice gentleman. He's, he's very helpful, and he apologized in our email. He's like, listen, I sent it up to T and E three months ago, which Threatened and Dangerous Species has to sign off on it because the transition area waiver through the wetlands. And the DEP's still working at home. It's a lot of different elements that just make my life on the permitting side very difficult. I mean, we have, at any one time, we have thirty permits up there waiting at the state for different, different elements. And lastly, the Seawall Design, I know that, I think that the engineering choice of Koller's Engineering to do this was good. I love their solution for the, I thought the simplistic nature of their solution was good, and I know they're moving ahead on getting all the permitting. I think it was a good choice in engineers to bring it, bring them to the table.
I seen them around town today.
Oh, really?
Yes. Yes.
Well, I appreciate that recommendation. You know, I think, Vince, you've, you've, you've always been very forward about what your strengths are and what your weaknesses may be, or whatever. So to recommend somebody else to take this on, it was a good recommendation. I think they've done a nice job. HPC just approved that design unanimously, so that was good news.
Well, I've always said to council, I, you know, I know what my limitations are after forty years in being an engineer, so at this point in time, I, I'm going to take on projects that I know I could do a good job for the city, and anything I can't handle, we'll make a recommendation. Just with the electrical.
Right.
The transformers, you know, it's, yeah, my area of expertise, but we'll bring the people in that we know could hopefully help.
That's great.
It's appreciated.
Any questions, council?
Mayor, if I, if I may, Vince, while you're here, we have a resolution on later in this meeting for the surveying of Phase Four Lafayette Street Park.
Oh, good.
Would you just touch on that briefly?
I can. As board is aware, there, there was a Phase Four of the park, which was the pedestrian access around the park, around that little pond there. So we took a look at it when we first came onboard, and realized that the design that was, the design that was encouraged by the previous engineer consisted of going through a transition area waiver between the freshwater wetlands and the wetland buffer, and also a coastal wetland.
Right.
Requiring two separate permits. Our concern was, we feel very comfortable with the transition area waiver for the, for the freshwater wetlands, had a little concern with the coastal wetland permit. So our recommendation was to redesign it in such a manner, and I think you've guys seen that little design, and it takes the same form, but it doesn't go all the way around. It goes out to two points, will be two different staging areas for viewing. So with that said, again, to our surprise, the wetlands line that was established by Mount McDonald was never approved. It never got an LOI. So it was there.
Was it because of historic fill, or just because?
No, just.
Because that was a concern, I remember.
I couldn't tell you why they never moved ahead with getting the LOI. An LOI is letter of interpretation that says the wetland points that you established out in the field are correct.
I see.
And they tied the, their wetland line into the wetland line from the electric company's engineers, which, again, that didn't have an LOI. So we said.
When do you think the DEP would be, well, when would you estimate the DEP would issue a permit?
So my hope, permitting through the summer, issued by early fall.
That'd be great.
So what, so my team went out there, not too happy with me, because it was, I said, ah, it's going to be easy. Because I'm looking at it from the road. When they got in there, they, it's pretty, pretty aggressive as far as the vegetation. So they mapped the wetlands line. The proposal that you have before you this evening is for the survey company to come in to do two things, to locate the freshwater wetland flags that are out there, and I think there are forty points, along with providing geographic information in that transition area waiver, because Mount McDonald's survey stopped short of that wetland transition, so in order to get a transition area waiver, we had to have topography. They did the same thing for us on the water line. So I think it was seventy-five hundred dollars to do the wetlands, and I think that was a very fair price. So that would, they would go out there, do that, then we could then do the plan for the two things, establish the LOI, and at the same time, get the transition area waiver to put this path in.
It'd just be so nice to be able to get this permitted by this summer and maybe have it for a winter project. That would be just great.
That would be the game plan.
Yeah.
And, you know, this is something that the Board of Education, they want more than anything else as part of this park project, an opportunity to have some ecological education out there.
Just be so nice for the kids.
And it, just to keep it in the back of your mind when planning this, you know, you might want to have ways we can lock it up, you know, for secure reasons for your school, but, you know, just, just keep that in the back of your mind.
It could be difficult coming from the south end.
I understand that.
From the school portion, we could do that, but from the south, that may be difficult. Well, it was difficult because right now it's fully fenced and fully locked up.
Yeah.
You know?
And I, it sounds like you're taking more of a conservative approach at this, which I think is best for everybody. You know, moving this along.
And I think at the end of the day, it's going to have the same impact for the people that use it. It's going to get them through the woods. It's going to get them through the, the ecological wetlands. It'll be a boardwalk. And then once we get to the area, we'll have viewing stations. We'll have some benches. We'll have some handicap access. We just did a project in middle township where we have wave, you know, the binoculars there on the.
Yeah, that's cool.
On, on the area so that, you know, you don't have to bring your own binoculars.
Oh, cool.
One set for adults, one set for kids. So we could do things like that.
Do they charge quarters for it?
Yeah, really.
Okay. That's great. Any other questions, council?
Just, how, how much difference with this proposal versus the original one is, is the trails? Is it?
The same amount of length.
Okay.
So I'll send you the concept, Deputy Mayor. It just doesn't go around the pond. It goes, if you could imagine the pond.
Right.
It goes halfway to the edge of the pond and then works its way back down. So it kind of creates almost like a smiley face around it, instead of going all the way around, because halfway through that pond converts from a freshwater to a coastal. Now, when you go out there, it looks exactly the same, but the state of New Jersey implemented their coastal line. It's, it's from nineteen seventy-two. There was some, I'm convinced there was some young intern doing the coastal line and falls asleep a couple of times, because the coastal line did, never matches the coastal line out in the field. And I could tell you that we'll plot, we've plotted the coastal wetlands line. We believe that the coastal wetlands line actually is further into the site, but the DEP's not going to care, because they say, here's our map coastal wetland, here's our freshwater wetlands line. We're dealing only with the DEP under transition area waiver.
But that could change over time, right? Streams and, and not that much?
It can, but here's the deal. The state of New Jersey, in their infinite wisdom, says if the map coastal wetland line that's out in the field differs more than fifteen feet from the physical line, it's freshwater wetlands, and they have a buffer.
Oh, wow.
It's, and my argument is, it's not freshwater, it's coastal wetlands. It's, it hasn't, had none of the same characteristics of freshwater wetlands. And we deal with it a lot on waterfront development applications, because, you know, you may have a tidal influence. That coastal wetland line sits there, and that's where it comes into play. The, you know, the surveyors go out. The map is done with a black fact marker, and the thickness of the line is twenty-five feet. We have to take the upper limits of the line, and even at that point in time, the map coastal wetland line that physically exists on site, sometimes it's fifty-foot difference than what they show on this ancient map.
Wow.
Get to everything about it. As soon as it differs, especially when it's upland, now it's considered freshwater wetlands, and we're subject to a buffer. And we don't want to be subject to a buffer, because the minimum buffer is fifty foot.
Wow.
Okay. Any other questions, council? Vince, great update. We really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see everybody. I can leave the exhibits here.
We have public comment coming up. Not yet. We do have public comment coming up. Do you have a question? Yeah.
Do you want to move up public comment, then?
Let's go on to ordinances. Can you hang, hang out for a minute? Okay.
Next, we have ordinances for second reading and consideration for adoption. We have four eighty-seven dash twenty twenty-two, an ordinance to update the uniform salary and classification plan for the Department of Personnel positions in the City of Cape May.
Do I have a, actually?
I'd like to make a motion to table this to the next meeting. I have some questions on, on some of the positions on here.
Do I have a second to table?
I'll second.
Roll call? Or any questions on that? Roll call?
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember McDade?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Malick?
Yes. There's a public hearing, but it's tabled. What do you want to do?
We're not, it was a motion to table instead of adopt on second reading, but it's up to council whether you want to.
Were you, wanted to make a comment on it?
Yes.
Go ahead. So we'll have a, a public hearing on this ordinance.
Stacy Shan, nine twenty-eight Columbia Avenue. My question for this ordinance is, there's a stipend for board meetings of ten thousand dollars. I'm assuming that's on top of their salary, and that what boards are they for, is my question.
That is the planning and zoning boards.
So they, the person get ten thousand for each board on top of the salary?
No, no, no. Ten thousand dollars for the boards.
For both boards? With, in addition to their salary, correct?
And in lieu of overtime.
In lieu of overtime? Okay. And then where can we find the job descriptions for these jobs and stipends?
We still have a copy of those. Those have not changed from last year, so they're available in the clerk's office. They're a part, they, they're a part of the ordinance currently.
Okay, but they're not, I didn't see them with the paperwork, so they're just.
This is just the changes to the ordinance.
Okay, I was just asking where they were located. Their clerk's office has them?
I believe so, yes.
So they're not online?
They're on file with the previous version of this ordinance.
Correct.
When the stipends list was.
So it's, so if I look up the ordinance, the job descriptions would be there?
With, with the.
Previous.
Right, the one that's in effect now.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Any other public comment on this ordinance, four eighty-seven? Seeing none. Roll call, please. This is, and I'm sorry, this is, we took roll call, that was the table. Thank you. Okay, so we'll close that public hearing. Clerk four eighty-nine?
Four eighty-nine dash twenty twenty-three, an ordinance amending section thirty-eight of the City of Cape May code to update ambulance and emergency service fees.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a public hearing on this ordinance. Is anyone here to speak on four eighty-nine? Ambulance fees? Seeing none, we can close public comment.
Mayor. I was just going to say, I want to put the phone number out there, as we did advertise it.
Oh, okay, yeah, please do that.
If anybody would like to make a public comment over the phone, please call six zero nine four two five one one eight six.
Go ahead, Shane.
I'd just like to make the comment that I spoke with the fire chief about this, and I guess it's a lot longer overdue than I expected. I didn't realize it's been this long since we raised prices.
Agreed. Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Any other comments on this, council? Roll call?
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember McDade?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Malick?
Yes.
Next, we have four ninety dash twenty twenty-three, an ordinance amending section four eighty-two of the City of Cape May code to update tree regulations and eliminate posting on trees.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Do I have a second?
A second.
We have a public hearing on four ninety. Would anyone wish to speak on four ninety? This is the ordinance to update tree regulations and eliminating posting on trees. Jay? Mr. Schatz?
Good evening, Jay Schatz, Chairman of the Shade Tree Commission, Cape May. I want to commend the city council for putting up this ordinance. This will protect some of the city, our living trees, from being used as signposts. And I think it's a good idea. There's enough signposts around to put up signs without abusing the trees. Trees will take a lot of abuse, but not forever, so thank you very much for doing this.
Thank, thank you, Jay. And, and as always, Mr. Schatz, thank you for all your service on the Shade Tree Commission. Any questions or comments, council? I'm sorry, did, any other public comment on this ordinance? We'll close public comment. Any council comments? No? Roll call?
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember McDade?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Malick?
Yes.
Next, we have the public portion on resolutions only. Those wishing to publicly comment, please come up to the podium. And if you would like to call in for a comment, the phone number is six zero nine four two five one one eight six.
Do we have anyone wishing to speak on the resolutions?
Hi, yes, Stacy Shan, nine twenty-eight Columbia Avenue. I have two questions about concerning the bills. One is, I see a bill for multi-temp for twelve, approximately twelve thousand dollars. I'm just bringing that attention, because multi-temp, I don't, as I don't know what the invoices are for, that's usually the air conditioner at Convention Hall, or anything concerning Convention Hall, usually.
I'm, I'm sorry, could you say that again?
Multi-temp?
Multi-temp.
The bill for multi-temp, which is the, usually HVC, HVAC?
I could see that one.
Why I'm bringing that up, because multi-temp, the bills are always quite large for the year for fixing our HVAC, and most of those charges go towards Convention Hall. My second question has to do with resolution for the exhaust for the firehouse. And my one question is, have we looked into getting any kind of grants towards this exhaust? And I noticed that it's coming out of the, I think, the general capital fund, and not the firehouse bond.
Grants are very hard to come by for a professional fire station. You can get some grants for volunteers, but they, they are, they're difficult.
Why I'm, why I'm bringing this up is because a couple of years ago, before we started the firehouse, I had went to the fireman's convention in Wildwood and talked to a couple of these companies that do exhaust. And they were pretty, well, there's also, there's different type of exhaust, connecting to the, the hose goes right to the exhaust of the fire trucks or a whole house vent. And they were saying that we could gotten grants for it. That's the only reason why I'm bringing it up.
Which, they, they are probably right, but the, the convention in Wildwood is a volunteers' fireman convention. So when the contractors are there, they're talking in the realm of volunteer world, which there are grants for volunteer-only departments. When you move into the paid departments, there's much less available. We did look. There wasn't anything available at, at this time for these types of systems.
Right.
But we did look.
Okay, because I just, and I did mention to him when I was talking to him, that was a, a paid firehouse.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public for resolutions this evening? Seeing none, we can close public comment.
Okay, next, we're on to the consent agenda. If anybody would like anything removed?
Emily, it's Maureen. I would like to note to, I will be abstaining from the city council work session, work session meeting minutes for the sixth of December, the twentieth of December, as well as the regular council meeting on December twentieth. Thank you.
Do you want to hear from me now, or when we're voting? You'd like now?
I think you can go now, yeah.
Okay, so I, I'm, I will be abstaining from the council, the special meeting minutes of January twenty-fifth, and of course, the closed session meeting minutes of January twenty-fifth.
I'd also be abstaining from December twentieth.
And January fifth, I think, as well, right?
Yeah.
For the consent agenda tonight, we have minutes. Cape May City Council Work Session Meeting Minutes dated December sixth, twenty twenty-two. Cape May City Special Meeting Minutes dated December twentieth, twenty twenty-two. Cape May City Closed Session Meeting Minutes dated December twentieth, twenty twenty-two. Cape May City Council Regular Meeting Minutes dated December twentieth, twenty twenty-two. Cape May City Council Reorganization Meeting Minutes dated January third, twenty twenty-three. Cape May City Council Special Meeting Minutes dated January fifth, twenty twenty-three. Cape May City Council Closed Session Meeting Minutes dated January fifth, twenty twenty-three. Cape May City Council Special Meeting Minutes dated January twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Cape May City Council Closed Session Meeting Minutes dated January twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Cape May City Council Regular Meeting Minutes dated January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. Cape May City Council Special Meeting Minutes dated January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. Cape May City Council Closed Session Meeting Minutes dated January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. For reports, we have the tax collectors' report for the month of December 2022. Fire incident report for the month of January 2023. Fire department annual report for the year of 2022. Police incident report for the month of January 2023. For resolutions tonight, we have 75-02-2023. Resolution approving certified list of the City of Cape May LoSAP qualified volunteer fire department members for the year 2023. Resolution issuing an amusement game license for Peter Tiberzio, 406 Beach Avenue. 77-02-2023. Resolution issuing an amusement game license for Peter Tiberzio, 732 to 736 Beach Avenue. 78-02-2023. Resolution authorizing City of Cape May to endorse NJDEP permanent application for beach concessionaire. 79-02-2023. Resolution authorizing change order number one to contract for reconstruction of Pennsylvania Avenue Basics Village Green. 80-02-2023. Resolution awarding contract for supply, delivery, and installation of source capture vehicle exhaust removal system. 81-02-2023. Resolution awarding a contract for professional services surveying for Lafayette Street Park Phase Four. And resolution 82-02-2023, resolution for the payment of bills.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, roll call?
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember McDade?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Moll?
Yes. Okay, old business, any old business, council?
I, can I bring up one thing?
Please.
Mayor, and it kind of piggybacks on what Stacy Shan was saying earlier with the bills. We were, multi-temp, holds our contract for Convention Hall. I know that we had asked at one point, I believe it was Stacy who asked, if we could have some sort of a, a, a large-scale, you know, looking at, do we need to replace that system? And I know that the manager's office was looking into that. Can we just follow up on that and see where we are?
Lou, do you want to, do you have an update or is that?
I don't know if he has an update.
Not right now, but I, I'll follow up and get back to you, that's all.
Okay.
I think that's very, you know, this has been an issue that's been plaguing the city for a long time. I was looking through old ordinances from, I mean, resolutions from years ago, and right after that building was built, we, we had issues with that.
Yeah.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay.
That's all.
Uh, new business, city solicitor?
I don't have anything tonight, Mayor, thank you.
City manager, uh, deputy city manager, Lou?
Nothing.
City clerk?
Not tonight, Mayor.
All right, and councilmember, uh, Deputy Mayor Baldwin?
Just a quick update, the Franklin Street Library is coming along really well. I did a walk-through about a week ago with some of the county commissioners there. Very impressed with how the, you know, how the prog, the project is progressing. There are a lot of really cool architectural, architectural features in there that's, it's going to shine. It really is a neat building. One other thing, the bathrooms at Convention Hall, Lou, I know that you were following up and we're probably now looking at a fall project at this point. We're waiting for the architect and engineer.
Yeah, see, the MEP engineer is completing their work and then we'll hand that off to the architect and from there, we'll be able to have a presentation to council.
Yeah, we were hoping to have it a little sooner than this, but we don't want to rush something that's, that's going to be a good project. Thank you.
Councilman Meyer?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. I think it's, you know, going through Cape May, I don't think I've seen this much work being done all at once in my entire life and it's really something really cool to see. And, you know, so many people come to Cape May and enjoy Cape May on a regular daily basis, just like a beautiful day that we had today. I'm sure people are going to be heading down here on the weekend, on Thursday, because it's going to be nice. But I walked the promenade today and I just love to talk to people and find out where they're from. And you find people from North Jersey just doing a day trip here, just, just on our promenade, you know? People from North Cape May and, and Courthouse, I know. It's just something really cool that we have that kind of feature that people enjoy. The last thing I want to ask or even talk about was the fact that I think it's, it's a very amazing time in Cape May to have our worst street being repaid by the county, I'm so thankful. We should probably get a group, uh, thank you card to the county for probably doing it. But what is, what is our schedule of phases for this project? Do you have any idea what we're looking at here for the public?
For Lafayette Street?
Lafayette Street, yeah.
Well, phase one is, is West Perry to Ocean Street, except for the school drop-off. They're going to do that over the course of spring break, so the school's not in session while they're doing that work. And then, phase two, they come back and pick up on Ocean Street and go all the way to Sydney. So it's not a very balanced phasing, but that'll get them through the, the heart of the city and, and the busiest part of our tourist area and out of here by at least the first of June.
Okay, yeah, I think it's really awesome, looking forward. Are we going to get our other roads replaced anytime?
Just to be clear on that, is, phase two is starting in the fall.
Correct.
So when you say out by June, you're talking phase one?
Phase one, right.
And then?
Okay.
Then Ocean to Sydney starts in end of September or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I interrupted you, sorry.
Sorry, what about Beach Avenue and, and Pittsburgh and places like that?
Well, Pittsburgh, they're currently working on and, and they're on schedule as they move through Pittsburgh. In fact, today, they're replacing some of the piping down, um, Texas and Pittsburgh where the, the tie flex valve was, was stuck open and was causing some of the flooding within our city. So they're working on that pipe, we had previously done some of the drainage work when we did Pennsylvania Phase Six to tie into their system and, and just improve that overall area. So they're moving along there, Beach Avenue has not yet been awarded. That was a federal project that required federal and state review. The state has just concluded their reviews and, and the county is expecting to award that on February 28th at their meeting. From there, they will schedule up a pre-construction meeting where we'll be able to get a schedule. Once I have that schedule, I'll report it back to council.
Well, you know, I wanted to talk about Beach Avenue, kind of based off the, the comments I made before. If we can have any opportunity to remove any of the wires going across Beach Avenue and put them underneath the road, I think it'd be best moving forward, you know, if anybody's lived here, you know, their whole life, you've seen every summer, a kite stuck in these, for some reason, people fly kites on the promenade or whatever it is going on. But if we can eliminate that, I think it just enhances the streetscape of the entire promenade area.
And most of the wires that you're referring to only feed the streetlights. So it, it really would be nice to get those underground.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Councilwoman McDade, I don't, do you have anything you'd like to?
I'm not at this time, Mayor Moll, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Yeager?
Um, nothing tonight.
Okay, I just want to add, and I think Beach Ave is, uh, February 28th, I think, the meeting that is to award. But, and then we'll know obviously more of the dates after that. But just so everyone knows, the, the phasing for Beach Avenue is Wilmington at Poverty Beach to Madison, so that, that stretch. And then, again, picking up phase two in the fall from Madison to the Cove. Actually, Broadway, not to the Cove, to Broadway.
We would love to have it.
I'm sorry, yeah, if we're looking at the, the county taking, taking it all the way to Broadway and not all, not going all the way to the Cove, we need to look at.
Doing that ourselves.
Doing that ourselves.
Or, or a change order.
Or, okay.
Yeah, well, we, we will, definitely, definitely. And I just highlight a couple of the things, I know Deputy Manager Bilasco already went over the INI study, but that was really great to get started, kind of a boring topic, nobody will see what's going on. But we, we got the INI study within the budget and what that is, is infiltrate, what's the other I? Infiltration and?
Inflows.
Inflows, thank you. To study our, our sewage, so that we, the city has known for many years that we're producing more sewage than water, which doesn't make sense. You, you shouldn't have more sewage going out of town than, than water you're producing. And frankly, it should be significantly less, given the use of garden hoses, of course, that water's coming out of the, or, or you're, you know, washing your vehicles, but especially landscaping. Any landscaping, of course, the water's coming out, but it's not going into the sewer. So the, our question has been for many, many years now, is why do we have more sewage coming out of town than we have, than we have water being produced? So hopefully, this study answers it. And one of the reasons that's an important question is we, we pay for all the gallonage of sewage, you know, to the county. So that has to be processed. So hopefully, this INI study answers some of those questions. And just reiterate on, on the firehouse, because I did get a couple of questions. There's not a lot to report because it's on time and on budget, which is a good thing to say. But any of the change orders that we receive, any change orders have to come to us as a city council. So we have to approve those here in public, which we've done, but, and, and we'll expect to see some more change orders as we finalize the project, little things that change that, even the firefighters had a couple little requests that we've already looked at for a change order. So there'll be small things as we come along, but so far, we're less than 1% in change orders, which is, which is great on a project of this scale and size. And just highlight again, the PA system, I saw them out there today working on getting that wired, which is, kudos to the Beach Safety Committee for, for pushing that over the years. This year, we will have, for the summertime, be able to reach every beach in Cape May through the emergency system. So that, that's a big deal, that we, we didn't have a lot of the, the northeast end of town with, with, with coverage. And anyway, with that, we'll open it up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak, please, please come to the microphone. Mr. Schatz?
Jay Schatz again, Shade Tree Commission. On the railroad parking lot, it's your decision on the maples and they'll grow very, very well there, providing you get the ground prepared well, suitably staked, and give them enough time. However, and there are shade, they are shade trees. However, I would like to advocate for Leland Cypress trees in there. They're relatively low cost, they're available, they're fast growers, they provide a good separation between the, the restaurant parking lot and the city parking lot. And they provide an excellent year-round habitat for birds. So in it, I would suggest Leland Cypress in that, in that area to provide what I think you want to do. And maybe an alternative is alternating, a, a couple of Leland Cypress and in one spot, okay? And then a maple tree in another.
I think that's easy to park.
Okay, and that'll give, that should give you a pretty good combination of, of things.
Okay.
Atlantic City Electric, I urge you to bring whatever pressure you can bear on Atlantic Electric to replace the Leland Cypress trees that were taken out. They've already, I think you've already had them agree to put a sidewalk on the north side of Venice Avenue. There is a sidewalk on the south side.
The Elmyris.
I think you have them agree to put a sidewalk on the north side.
Right.
I suggest you pressure them to put Leland Cypress back in there again. And they can be cut back every three or four years, or topped every three or four years and provide a nice barrier. And that would assuage some of the criticism from the neighbors across the street who are still pretty vocal about that great big building that's there. I think the building is a wonderful building.
I don't think you'll get much pushback from us for, for.
Pardon?
I don't think you'll get much pushback from us to, to, we would, we would love to see that landscape a lot better.
Well, could you bring pressure to bear? I can, I can bring a little pressure to bear, but you know, if that's not.
We will, we'll bring you with us.
Okay, that'd be fine, because I think that would be a good thing to replace those trees. We were, we, the Shade Tree Commission was unable to use those trees, they were just too big. I couldn't find a landscaper who was willing to stick them in the ground, brace them, and give any assurance that they were going to stay upright in, in storms, so, because they were just a little too big.
Are you talking about both sides on?
No, no, I'm talking about on, on, on the north side of Venice Avenue. There's plenty of room to put a sidewalk in, to put a row of trees in and, and a privacy or the, the fence with the, with the three wires on the top facing down to the street to keep people from climbing the fence. Okay, the, uh, the, my conversations with Atlantic Electric said they wanted to prevent squirrels from getting in there. And I could be wrong, but I've never seen a squirrel build a nest in a arborум or a Leland Cypress tree. It's a little too dense, I think they build a nest in trees where they can see what's coming all around. I could be wrong, it could be full of squirrels in no time at all, but I've never seen a squirrel in an arborум or a Leland Cypress trees. The firehouse, there are three additional trees that weren't, were not shown in the maps that were shown, at least the ones that I've seen. One is to the east of the fire museum, which is a memorial tree for Davy Todd, who was a volunteer firefighter for many, many years. Jean Westland is a memorial tree just off the parking lot and it's plenty of room to work around. She was a secretary, police secretary for many, many years, and she was also a secretary to Shade Tree Commission. And there's a line of Cypress to the rear, Leland Cypress to the rear of the fire hall, which we couldn't get in, when I say we, I, our arborists couldn't get in to trim those trees because of all the equipment and activities going on in there. But as soon as they clear out, you'll trim those trees back from the back of the fire, uh, back of the fire museum.
Right.
So those are trees that weren't on the pictures that I saw.
That's, that's by, no.
Pardon?
Uh, I don't think that was just a detail, but there's no plan whatsoever to remove any of the trees that you see. In fact, I know Mr. Meyer was an advocate to make sure, I, I was as well, to make sure that those trees stayed as much as possible. They, of course, they had the trims, they had to trim some of them for the building.
I understand that, and I gave approval to trim the tree, Meyer, to, to trim Jean Westland's tree back so they could get in there with their equipment when they were building the, the west, yeah, west side of the fire hall.
Yeah, no, no plan, there is no plan to take those trees down.
Good, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jay.
Any other questions or comments? Stacy?
I just have a question for Mr. Orlando. You talked about Kiwanis Park and that you added open space elements after it went out to bid. Could you just explain what those open space elements were that were added?
So. In the county park program now, they have what's called placemaking items, which are certain elements that they want to see consistent throughout all their parks that they endorse. They consist of a very typ, a very symmetrical bench, trash enclosures, light fixtures, bike racks, and signage.
So with those, all those things were added?
So there, those elements are already part of the park. But in order to comply with the placemaking standards from the county, the open space, they'll have to, those items will now have to be changed to meet their details.
Okay, because I think it was one of the questions was, when we, they were doing the park, was the lighting behind those homes?
No, there's, there's no, there's, at one point in time, we were talking about baller lights along there. There are no baller lights along that side.
Okay, and then I guess also in your plans, they talked about right next to the Macedonian Baptist Church, there's some trees there between the curb and the sidewalk. And when you're adding that 10-foot sidewalk, are you going to be taking away those trees?
I'll have to take a closer look at that, maybe. We'll see how, what kind of shape they're in. I won't remove a tree unless it's endorsed by the Shade Tree Commission. So if in fact, we're going to go 10-foot sidewalk, we'll have to do a cutout in the sidewalk area in order to preserve that tree.
Yeah, because I didn't see them on your plans, that's why I was asking. And then my other question concerning that was, just so the council's aware, the Colonial House is, was owned by a slave owner. So we have to keep that in mind when you want to move a slave owner into the block that's Museum Road for Black History. And I don't know if that's appropriate, be putting a black slave owner's house in between all those other historic homes and churches that are, have to do with black history. My other question has to do with the pilings behind Mermaids, what are they going to be used for that were put in?
I think they're originally there for a restroom many years ago, I think that was started before I even got on.
Always be behind Mermaids, look, they were brand-new ones, put in, in back behind Mermaids.
It's, uh, it's almost where the old.
It's almost where the old entrance to the beach used to be, right?
It's directly behind Mermaids.
Okay, I don't know.
I don't know.
Okay. And then, I saw on Beach Drive that the sinkhole is back, that we paid a good amount of money for it to fix, right there by Peter Shields? I knew before there was some stipulation on who was supposed to pay for it, the county or us, and we ended up paying for it to be fixed, and I noticed that it's back.
Correct.
Are we going to fix it again, or are we going to have the?
No, no, we, between the Beach Avenue project and in our Roads Capital project, we've identified the 000 block of Trenton as our primary focus. We put in and were approved for a NJDOT, NJDOT grant to replace that block of Trenton. So, between the two projects, it should fix whatever is causing that sinkhole.
Yeah, because I think, you know, we paid, and don't hold me to the price, but it was $50,000, I think it was, to fix that. It was a good amount of money. And, I mean, we should be going back to the person that fixed it, saying they didn't fix it properly, if they told us this was going to fix it, and that it's back again so quickly after we fixed it, less than a year.
Yeah. Okay. All right. And just, the answer there is, we're replying for a DOT grant right now and have that within our capital budget to fix that 100 block of Trenton Avenue, as well as that entire beachfront being done by the county.
Yeah, I think going back to, being that it's a county road, maybe we should push it back onto the county to be fixing this issue.
Okay, we'll ask them. All right. Any other questions or comments? All right, motion to adjourn? All right, have a wonderful evening, everyone. The time for the record is now 6:32. Thank you very much.